Bill Makinson always alerts me when we're going live. He sends me a text. Thank you, Bill. Just making sure the councilors on Zoom are present.
Chair on mic.
Counselor Gardner may be late or has given his regrets due to a family issue. Is there anyone who will lead us in song? I think Counselor Hollingsworth can lead us in singing the National. Well. Well, but I also know that Counselor Ebert sings. No, she still sings, and so I'm going to be asking her. Counselor Ebert, can you lead us in a singing? Are we still not? Are we still not set up? Counselor Bergeron, can you hear us? Okay. So to the public watchings, thank you for your patience. We're just getting up to speed with audio. Well, Counselor Ebert, you will lead us, but we are all going to sing. And we're not, we're going to actually sing. We're all physically distinct enough that we can sing. Counselor Bergeron? Counselor Towndale? No. Can you unmute yourselves? But they still can't hear us, though. Let's see if we can hear you. Oh, we can't even. Can you hear us now? You hear us now? Still nothing, councilors?
No.
No. Counselor DePell, can you hear us? Counselor DePell? Can you hear us now? Counselor Towndale, can you hear us?
I can, Madam Mayor.
Counselor DePell? Counselor Towndale? Counselor Towndale, can you hear us? Counselor Bergeron? Counselor Bergeron and Counselor Towndale, can you hear us? Yes. Was that Mr. Makinson that came to our rescue?
Once again.
Thank you, Mr. Makinson. Your TV does it again. All right. We are going to rise for the singing of the National Anthem, and I'm going to turn that over to Counselor Ebert to lead us in whatever format she chooses. Thank you very much, Counselor Ebert. Can we stand again for a moment of personal reflection? I did it backwards. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you to the television audience for your patience tonight as we get started. We acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Mohawk people of Akwasasni. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Bernadette Clement.
Present.
Counselors Claude McIntosh.
Present.
Eric Bergeron.
Present.
Dean Hollingsworth. Callie Lynn Evans.
Present.
Counselors Maurice DePell.
As am Madam Clerk.
Glenn Grant.
Present.
Todd Bennett.
Present.
Justin Towndale.
Present.
Andy Lane McDonald.
Present.
Any additions, deletions, or amendments? Counselor Towndale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm wondering if we can take a consent report for tax write-offs and adjustments and put that into Communications, please. Thank you.
Anybody else for additions, deletions? We are walking on a special new business motion this evening. We'll get to that later. Madam Clerk? Any additions or deletions?
Just a new business motion at the end of the meeting, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Adoption of the agenda, we need a mover and a seconder. Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Bennett. Any discussion? All in favor?
In favor.
Carried. Any disclosure of interest? Seeing none, we need a motion to go into Committee of the Whole. Counselor Ebert and Counselor Grant, all in favor?
In favor.
Carried. We have minutes for the meetings of November 23rd and December 7th. Moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor McIntosh. Any discussion? All in favor?
In favor.
Carried. Madam Clerk?
Our consent reports. The first one is Childcare Business Practice Guidelines for 2021, with a recommendation that council approve the 2021 Childcare Division Business Practice Guidelines for the distribution of special purposes, general operating and fee subsidy funding to operators that have a service contract with the City of Cornwall as outlined in the background discussion of this report. Our second item is rezoning of Northwoods Forest Subdivision Phase 2, with a recommendation that council approve the rezoning of the subject properties legally described as lots 1 to 12 and 21 to 23 on registered Plan 52M48 from residential 15 to residential 10. Elected officials' expense statements, with a recommendation that council receive the statement of expenses for elected officials for the period of October 1st to 31st, 2020. RFP 20P18, supply and installation of play structure and engineered wood fiber at Emil Le Blanc Park, Francis Gandon Park, and the Benson Center, with a recommendation that this RFP be awarded to, as follows: A) Emil Le Blanc Park and Francis Gandon Park play structures be awarded to Henderson Recreation Equipment from Simcoe at the total bid price of $135,371.74. B) The Benson Center play structure be awarded to Playground Planners from Nippon at the total bid price of $167,538.60. RFP, Terms of Reference Operation and Preventative Maintenance Program for Methane Gas Collection System and Lichate Collection System, with a recommendation that council receive this report. Tender 20T37, Aquatic Center Ventilation System Upgrade, recommending that this tender be awarded to Rose Mec from Long Sioux at the total bid price of $576,920. Tender 20T38, Plumbing Services, with a recommendation that this tender be awarded to Oscar La Dussara Mechanical from Cornwall for a two-year period from January 1st, 2021, to December 31st, 2022, with an option to renew for an additional one-year term, being the best bid meeting tender specifications.
Consent items moved by. Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Grant. Any discussion? All in favor?
In favor.
Against? Carried.
Our next item is Resolution 202010, One-Year Extension of Deadlines for the Asset Management Planning. Now therefore be it resolved that the Corporation of the City of Cornwall supports MFoa's letter to the Ministry of Infrastructure requesting a one-year extension of deadlines in OREG 58817, Asset Management Planning for Municipal Infrastructure under the Infrastructure for Job and Prosperity Act 2015, so that all municipalities can focus on the immediate needs of the pandemic and engage in municipal asset management planning when capacity challenges are resolved.
Madam CIO, do you want to make any comment, or Madam CFO?
I'll redirect to Mrs. Bailey. Through you, Madam Mayor. MFoa has reached out to its members and has asked for councils to support the extension of the next deadline for asset management planning, which is our core infrastructure assets. We have an asset management plan due July 1st, 2021. And what MFoa has indicated to the province who regulates asset management planning for municipalities, that right now municipalities are focusing on the pandemic. And by extending the timelines, the asset management plan that's brought forward later than July 1st, 2021 would be more meaningful. And the dedicated work that is required for that, the staff or municipalities will have the resources in order to do that. So they're asking to support an extension of that requirement.
Any questions? Mover and seconder? Moved by Counselor McDonald, seconded by Counselor Grant. Any further discussion? All in favor?
In favor.
Carried.
Moving on to unfinished business. The first one is Town Hall Meetings Policy, with a recommendation that council approve the Town Hall Meetings Policy.
Thank you. Madam CIO, can you introduce so that we can then have discussion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So at the last council meeting, we presented the policy. We did have some feedback from council. So we have made some changes to the policy based on some of the feedback that we've received from council. I can go through each of the changes or put it back to council in case there are any questions with respect to the changes.
Why don't we walk through them?
Certainly. So at the very beginning of the report, we referred to Clause 3E. The meetings were broken down into sections. And we wanted the we wanted the composition of the meeting to allow for two different components. There could be items that council would like to take to a town hall meeting to garner feedback from the community. We have one item on our unfinished business listing with respect to the ward system as an example. And we also wanted to allow a town hall meeting for members of the public be able to come forward to council and bring forward their ideas or feedback on items that council might be working on. Could be at the beginning of the term with respect to setting up strategic priorities. It could be matters of concern in general to the community. So we thought that you wanted, it would be good to have two different components of the meeting. One where the community can bring forward things that they would like to bring to council's attention. But then also, there could be a component where council would like to have an item come forward at a potential town hall meeting to garner people's feedback as another form of engagement. There was a section for closing remarks by members of council. Council had indicated that they thought perhaps that wasn't necessary. So we have removed that. Council will have an opportunity to speak at any point in time or take their turn to speak during the town hall meetings. And we have on Clause 5A, we've talked about the decorum for conduct at the town hall meetings. This town hall policy would be something that would be distributed to members of the public that wanted to come in to speak to council. So administration is recommending that we continue to leave certain clauses in the town hall policy that are consistent to council's code of conduct. And so that would be the same for Clause 5A and 5C. With respect to item number five on the report, Clause 5H, we have changed the time to allow council to speak to three minutes based on feedback that we've received from council. On Clause 5K, there was feedback from council to we wanted to the town hall meetings are really meant for garnering feedback from the public, not necessarily moving business matters forward. So the idea within that clause is to allow council to take in that feedback. Council would like to bring forward motions at a regular council meeting or committee of a whole. Then that is the format to do that. So we're recommending that that clause remain as is. There's a clause, 5M, where members of administration may attend but are not permitted to participate. I think that council wanted to have wording that said members of administration are encouraged to attend. Like council to know that administration is happy to attend these meetings and potentially be a resource for some information. But the intent of the meetings really is to allow council to have dialogue with the community and not have administration influence maybe how part of that dialogue is going within a meeting. Electronic meetings will follow the same procedure as currently with council meetings during a state of emergency. So that clause has been added. And those are, that's a summary of the items that we have made for changes.
I'll start a speaking list if there are people who want to make comments. Counselor McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, the first thing I want to say is I think administration did a great job of capturing the comments that we made that night because I think I see everything that meant a lot to me reflected here. So I appreciate that. But I do have a question, and perhaps we haven't hammered this out yet. Do we anticipate having a regular scheduled town hall meeting, which would have the advantage of not letting issues fester too long before they're aired? Or do we think that this will be in response to public demand? Or maybe we haven't thought that far ahead yet?
Madam CEO?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we left the policy flexible for council to determine whether or not there are times when a town hall meeting should occur. I think we are contemplating that we would let the community know that we will hold or will schedule a town hall meeting on a particular date. And if they would like to address council, then they would have to submit their request so many days in advance. If we did not receive any requests, or there was no items, then we wouldn't hold the meeting. So I think that we want to try and encourage a couple of meetings a year. We wanted the policy to be flexible so that depending on what was going on, if council wanted to have a special town hall meeting, then you can, depending on what arises. So the flexibility is there. But the idea would be to let the community know that we will have a town hall meeting that will allow them to plan for participation. At the very beginning of this council, we received many requests from the community to want to come in and make a presentation to council on potentially an idea. We think about some of the items that we've dealt with over the last 24 months. So I think ideally, you want to try and have an opportunity that will facilitate that type of discussion and not feel like we're rushing through having too many presentations at a council meeting. It's really to allow, and if we advertise that we're doing this, you might very well receive more inquiries from the community. So the idea would be to plan it. And if people come forward, then we'll have it. If there are no items coming forward, then we potentially could not have, we could cancel the meeting. But then also have it open for council in case there are subjects that you might want to have discussed at that particular meeting as well.
Go ahead.
So then my last question would be, do we anticipate having a mechanism on the city website whereby people could communicate that they'd like to have a town hall on a certain subject? Maybe a special town hall meeting button or something like that?
Madam CEO?
So we would, if we were planning a town hall meeting, we'd have that meeting date publicized. We'd have information on the website as to how you could submit your request to speak to council, what the matter is. And that will be available on the website.
I didn't mean if we were issuing a special invitation. I just mean like if we have a button there at all times. So if somebody just out of the blue decides they're really keen to talk about something, that they would be able to send that request in. And like if it could be generated randomly by a member of the public?
Yeah, I think that, through you, Madam Mayor, I think yes. So we could certainly allow for that opportunity to submit. I think ideally, it would be also good if we let the community know that we would plan, you know, a couple of meetings a year so that they would know as well that we're planning certain times.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Oh. Counselor Mack?
Who's going, who will chair these meetings? Who's going to be the moderator? Sacrificial lamb?
The mayor or designate.
Okay. I, most times, these things go off quite nicely. North Bay does it quarterly, and apparently it's been a bit of a success.
Yes.
I have some concerns at times when, you certainly would need a strong chair. I'm looking at the five minutes has been cut to three minutes. That could be fun to enforce, even around this table. We often, not often, sometimes we go past three and four minutes. If it's a hot subject and somebody gets up and they're really on fire, the three minutes isn't going to be enough. So do you enforce the three minutes with a clock or something? Or do you give it some leeway? It's to my, it's not a concern, but it's an observation.
My response to that is, I mean, this is new. We're in uncharted territory here. So I think there will be, the policy is flexible so that we can address some of those things as we move forward. I've been sharing meetings a long time, including a PAC meeting where we were talking about where the Walmart would locate. That was held here, and it was a hot meeting. So yeah, I think that that will happen, and we will take that as it goes. Your point's well taken. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just one very small question on page 118.5 with regards to the three minutes. And I can't remember the report proper. But does that mean, like, I'm assuming we would have possibly two or three items open to the public? Is that how we visualize it? So we're going to talk about, I don't know, let's say the fire hall is an example of maybe a new rink or a road construction being built. So we would potentially have two or three items on the agenda. Does that, that make sense?
Madam CEO?
Or is it one item?
No, through you, Madam Mayor. It would depend on how many submissions we had from the community. So you could have, you could have multiple items.
Right.
It could be, you could have, you know, four or five. Again, it would depend on what's coming forward from the community. I don't, I don't think we envision you would have a long list. You might have more interest at the beginning of a term of council, like we saw for this term. And if so, then maybe we'd have to schedule a couple of meetings. But you could have, we haven't, we haven't stated how many items would be brought forward. But you could have, you could have several.
Okay. Then just, and I'm looking for major revision. I'm pretty, I'm fine with it. The only question I ask, that being said, is that with regards to the three minutes, are we getting three minutes per item? Or three minutes at the end of the night to sum up whatever has been discussed? Because I can't remember in the actual document if it said per item. I don't remember. And I don't have it right here in front of me. I don't recall any wording saying per item. And I don't mean to be a nitpicker, Your Worship. I just think we might want to make sure we know what we're allowed to do and what we're not.
I'll turn first to Madam Clerk.
Through you, Madam Mayor. The three minutes is meant per person. So let's say we
On whatever's been discussed for the whole evening?
No.
Or per item?
So through you, Madam Mayor. So let's say if we started a meeting with subjects where council were interested in input, like the ward and electoral system, then maybe we would limit to the first 10 speakers, and they would have three minutes each to give you their opinions and comments, concerns. So that's the first part of the meeting. The second part of the meeting, people are registering their subjects. So if a random citizen wanted to talk about the fire hall, they would have three minutes to speak about it. Another resident would want to talk about sidewalks, they would have three minutes.
Right. But my, what my question is, the provision says hearing council comments, comments from council. So like, would councilors have a respective three minutes to talk? Or?
Through you, Madam Mayor.
Or, and is it three minutes per item or just three minutes period?
The town hall meetings, through you, Madam Mayor, are meant to hear the public. So as much as you may have questions and want to dialogue with the, with the public, the public would be the ones that would come out and speak their minds.
Well, Your Worship, I think we need to kind of take this through one run or a couple runs to see. And then perhaps go back and say, well, this is what it said, but it's not really kind of going the way we want, perhaps. So I'll leave it to, give it a whirl the first time and see how it goes. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, before I call for a mover and seconder, I'll just say this. I want to thank administration, particularly the CIO and the clerk, for working on this document. I want to thank all of you for your comments and conversation about this. I just want to read 5D. Town hall meetings are not a statutory requirement of council. They are offered as an added opportunity for dialogue with the community grounded in the principles of transparency, responsiveness, participation, and collaboration. So this is new for us. Other municipalities do this. Not everyone. But we're going to move forward with this and give the public an added opportunity to engage with us. We have shown ourselves to be a council that wants to survey, that wants to ask questions. And this, I think, is a continuation of the spirit that this council has demonstrated so far in this term. Is there a mover? Counselor Grant, a seconder. Counselor McDonald. Any further discussion? All in favor?
In favor.
Against? Carried unanimously. Thank you very much, council.
Our next item is the unfinished business listing for December 14th, and we're looking for council to receive the list.
Moved by Counselor Ebert, seconded by Counselor Mack. Any discussion? All in favor?
In favor.
Carried. Thank you.
Moving on to communication reports. Transfer payments to city partners with the recommendation that council direct administration to continue monthly transfer payments for operating costs to the identified city partners listed.
Moved by Counsel Eber, seconded by Counsel Grant. Any questions, discussion? Madam CEO, did you want to comment?
Through you, Madam Mayor, this is a regular item that administration brings forward to council every year at this time, understanding that we'll be in budget discussions early in the new year. This allows payments to those partners of ours to continue early in the new year without having to wait for council's review through the budget process.
Thank you. All in favor? Carried.
2020 carry forwards of operations with the recommendation that council approve the carry forwards of 2020 operations to 2021.
Moved by Counsel McDonald, seconded by Counsel Bennett. Any discussion? Madam CEO, your comments from the earlier motion are the same.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for operating, and then the following report is capital. As part of our process, we ask for certain items to be carried forward into next year.
All in favor?
In favor.
Carried.
2020 carry forwards of capital with the recommendation that council approve the carry forward of the capital projects listed on Schedule 1 of this report.
Moved by Counsel Bergeron? No. You'll have a question. Moved by Counsel Grant, seconded by Counsel Bennett. Questions, Counsel Bergeron?
Thank you. My question relates to two items, the train, the locomotive stabilization fund, as well as the laser ice leveler. Both of them haven't started. I think the locomotive is in year two of not having started. Do these projects, by definition, not meet the criteria to push forward, i.e. should they not come back to budget automatically?
Madam CEO?
We should redirect it to Mrs. Bailey.
Madam CFO?
Through you, Madam Mayor, there's a number of criteria, including a department's commitment to purchase goods and/or services related to capital. Maybe for the ice leveler specifically, Mr. Boilo could let council know where it is in the process.
Of course. Mr. Boilo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you. My understanding is that that project has been put off to next year, I believe, together with some other purchases. I'll let Mr. Fathrup provide further detail.
Mr. Fathrup.
Through you, Madam Mayor. The ice laser level systems were put off for a year because next year, we're replacing the Zambonis at the Benson Center. That project is being done through the garage, so the garage advised us of this, and so it's more beneficial as opposed to equipping existing Zambonis that we're going to dispose of next year with this equipment. It'd be more beneficial to purchase the new Zambonis with this equipment. So that's why we're looking to carry over those funds to next year to purchase those laser systems.
Counsel Bergeron, I believe you had a second item?
The second item was the locomotive, but to be clear, I don't think that's provided clarity for me, the response. If we're pushing it to next year, should it not come back to budget based on the criteria that are in the document itself? If it's being pushed a year, by definition, then it should come back to budget unless it has started or met one of these three criteria.
Right. Madam CFO?
Through you, Madam Mayor. There is also a criteria that if projects are not yet started and the department would like to go ahead with the project, they do bring it to council through this report to ask for that to be done.
Counsel Bergeron?
Well, it's kind of feeding itself here. The response then is that this document is requesting that, not that it meets that criteria already.
It does contain both, Madam Mayor.
I'm not sure that clears it up for me, but could you also comment on the locomotive then? I believe this is year two that it's been at $0, and I would personally like to see it come back to budget.
Through you, Madam Mayor. The locomotive doesn't currently have an impact on budget. It is being funded through reserves. It is an open project, and I believe at a standstill right now. I can redirect to Mr. DeWitt if he would like to, or Mr. Boilo.
Mr. Boilo.
I may need the assistance of Mr. DeWitt on this one, I'm not sure.
You were quicker to put on your mic, though, so.
Counsel, both this council and the previous council have had a fair amount of conversation about the proper location for this facility. I don't think we've really received direction from council as to the final location and the final decision for improvements for the property. So it is possible that perhaps this is a conversation that can occur again during this budget deliberation to decide A, location, and B, the actual details of improvements. But there is, there is a figure, an estimated figure in the budget. Perhaps Mr. DeWitt has more information, but we expect that, I believe the figure is $100,000 or thereabouts, that that may fall short, will likely fall short of move, A, if it's moved, it will be not inexpensive, and secondly, the improvements to allow for public, for a proper public viewing may exceed $100,000.
Mr. DeWitt?
Through you, Madam Mayor. There was a report a couple, I would say, with the previous council, and I don't think it went anywhere, there was some alternatives put out. As Mr. Boilo suggested, there was, the cost that came in to refurbish the locomotive and then, and put it in a location where it could be, I'll say, appreciated more so, exceeded the budget. And there were some other recommendations, if I recall correctly, whereby we could look at possibly turning them, turning the unit over to, if council did not wish to proceed with the expenditure, that we could turn the unit over to a, to nonprofit groups that wish to, that are interested in maintaining the unit themselves.
Thank you. Counsel Bergeron?
I'm not sure that clears it up at all in general. So I would, I would prefer this conversation to happen at budget. Can these two items be deferred until budget time? They were not expenditures in 2020. There seems to be a little bit of debate in terms of next steps. That, to me, is the purpose of budget, and it's a month and a half from now.
Madam CEO?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I think with the locomotive, nothing would happen until administration brought information back to council. So we are, I think, more than happy to try and have some of those discussions with council during the budget process, given that it's still one of those items that we know requires more decision, more, I think, more review on potential costs, because I think the costs are well in excess of what we have indicated. Part of the reason at the time of setting it up to be funded from working reserves, it would have to be paid back the following year that we expended those dollars, but part of the reason we intentionally set it up that way was so that only when those funds were expended would they get withdrawn. It's not as though we're taking money from the tax base and setting aside for a project that we knew was going to have some, I think, challenges and timelines attached to it. A little bit different than the ice leveler. The ice leveler is being funded from reserves, that would be from our equipment reserve. In that respect, it's being funded from a specific area for recreation for an intended purpose. When that other Zamboni equipment is purchased, then it makes sense to have the ice leveler done at the same time. The funds are going to come from the same equipment reserve. So I think that we would just like to, it's our intention to proceed with that, so I think we'd like to see it remain the way it is. Council would like to see us bring it back during the budget process, then, you know, we can do that as well, but it's coming from a specific equipment reserve for recreation.
Counsel Bergeron, any response?
Well, that's a little more clear in terms of process and reasoning, so I suppose I would just listen to the rest of council on this here. I personally would like to see that budget. I would defer it to budget if that's a motion I can make.
You would make a motion to defer what to budget?
Those two items, the locomotive and the ice leveler.
Madam Clerk?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes, counsel Bergeron can move that if you get a seconder and get council approval.
Counsel Hollingsworth seconds. Any discussion on the motion to defer both items to the budget? Counsel Mack?
I wanted to address the locomotive issue. I think Counsel Bergeron and I are on the same page on this one when I saw this, too. This issue was back ages, not just the last previous council. I thought that it was $100,000 to stabilize the locomotive, not to restore it. And I thought at the time, Mr. DeWitt gave us some very good advice on this one, that it was going to cost us a lot more than that to put it in shape. It's in bad shape. It's almost derelict, if it isn't. So I was interested in saying, hey, at budget time, got to make the final decision on this thing. Can't go on and on, it's been going on for years and been kicked down the road. We had some options. I believe we had correspondence from the railway, railroad museum in Smith Falls. They were willing to take it off our hands, and there were some other people who were interested. So it's not a case where we're going to send it to scrap metal, but it could be restored by another group that's willing to do it, just wouldn't be in Cornell. And when it came to moving the thing, we ran into all kinds of problems, where to put it. There was great resistance to putting it on the waterfront, and really, at this time, we don't have a place for it, and it's in an absolutely ridiculous site. So I'm very interested, looking at this at budget time and saying, we make the decision now, and let's get a final, what it's really going to cost to restore this piece of equipment.
Any further discussion? All in favor? So all in favor of the main motion, right? Did we, we didn't vote on that one yet? As amended. All in favor? Against?
Going back to the tax write-off and adjustments, Madam Mayor, with the recommendation that council received the report for tax write-offs and adjustments under Section 357 of the Municipal Act and tax refunds from decisions made by the Assessment Review Board.
Moved by? Counsel Towndale, seconded by? Counsel Bennett? Counsel Towndale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pulled this one out of consent just because I'm going to kind of take a page from your book. You know, you always bring up questions and bring up topics that are relevant to the public during meetings and mention that there are people who are interested in getting into more detail. So in this case, I'm hoping that, I believe it'd be Ms. Bailey could touch on and elaborate at this meeting about the minutes of settlement from the ARB regarding the two properties listed here and what that means exactly.
Madam CFO?
Through you, Madam Mayor. We, probably two or three times a year, we bring to council the tax write-off and adjustment report, and what it includes is tax adjustments through 357s, which means a change in property, whether there was a demolition or a class change, et cetera. What Counsel Towndale's question is, is we also report on minutes of settlement that have come in. We have two on this report, one for RioCan, that's the East Court Mall, and there was a change in assessment through minutes of settlement that were approved by the ARB, mostly related to the renovation at the store where the storefront, the stores are now at the front of the store with vacant space at the back, and also changes in rents paid to the landlord that created a lower assessed value. The second one, Cornwall South Investments, that same thing, it more so, though, related to the depreciation of the building itself, the reason for the assessed, assessment change.
Counsel Towndale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can Ms. Bailey elaborate on the refunds and what that means for our budget?
Madam CFO?
Through you, Madam Mayor. The refund to the city is the municipal shares, so included in this report is $752,000. The city budgets $1 million each year, though we are aware of a few other minutes of settlement that will hit our 2020 year-end. And once those decisions are with, are to the city from the ARB, we'll bring those to council as well. What it means is we will be over budget in tax write-offs at the end of the year, and we'll manage that through our overall budget year-end.
Counsel Towndale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Bailey. And so then, in closing, as well, because of these adjustments, that means that going forward, we will be collecting less property taxes on these respective properties, is that correct?
Madam CFO?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor, that is correct. We have had communication from IMPACT that those assessment changes have been included in our 2021 role.
Counsel Towndale?
Thank you, Congress. Thank you.
Thank you for raising the question. Questions are always in order, and it is important, you're correct, for the public to understand that changes to properties has an impact on revenue for a city. So, thank you.
All in favor?
In favor.
Against? Carried.
Madam Mayor, as mentioned earlier in the meeting, we have one new business item, and I will read it for everyone to hear.
Please.
Whereas bows of holly, jingle bells, cups of cheer, mistletoe, candy canes, pine trees, eggnog, twinkling lights, and other elements of the Christmas cornucopia will provide some yuletine joy as we face the coming winter, but they will, alas, come up short without the magic of Santa. Whereas with other countries like Trinidad and Tobago, Ireland, Belgium, and Australia already taking steps to exempt Santa from COVID-19-related restrictions, governments in Canada should similarly take action to assure Canadian children that despite the current pandemic, Santa will still be able to visit Canadian homes and make spirits bright. Whereas children have had a difficult 2020 with challenges, including disruptions of their education, decreased recreational activities, and less playtime with friends. Whereas children should not be made to suffer any unnecessary anxiety. Whereas, with respect to public health concerns, world-renowned immunologist Dr. Anthony Fossey has advised that Santa is exempt from COVID-19 and has innate immunity, similar to the Easter Bunny. Whereas for possible enforcement challenges, Santa can be easily recognized through a series of identifiers. Wears boots and suit of red, has a beard that is long and white, a long cap on his head, a big red cherry nose, laughs this way, ho, 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 and eight reindeer pull his sleigh, not counting Rudolph. Now therefore, be it resolved that city council request the government of Ontario to deem Santa Claus an essential service, and that the government of Canada take the necessary actions required to exempt Santa Claus and his reindeer from any and all quarantine measures so that his annual mission safely delivers- measures so that his annual mission, safely delivering joy to children around the world, is not in any way impinged. Madam Clerk, that was an impressive laugh and an impressive reading of that motion. Is there a mover? Counsel Ebert, seconded by Counsel Mack? Oh, yes, we're, we're going to, we're going to take questions or comments. Counsel Ebert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to know which elf wrote this lovely resolution for us?
Well, there are other cities that are, that are other, yes, and countries that are listed there, so.
Excellent.
There was lots of inspiration taking from other places.
Through you, Madam Mayor, I don't think it was an elf, I think it was an angel.
Oh, my, my heart. Well, thank you to whoever wrote this motion. I'm very glad to support it today. I even heard that the North Pole has received its first batch of vaccines and all elves, Santa and Mrs. Claus have been, have received the first shot. And so hopefully they'll be able to get their second shot in the new year as well. So very happy to support this motion. This is why I ran for counsel, to support positive things like this.
And thank you for those additional comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this motion? Counsel Dupell? Did I hear your voice? Yes?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to support this motion as well. And I would think Mrs. Claus would be really jealous over the ho, ho, ho that Madam Clerk gave tonight.
That was impressive.
It was very impressive, but I, I'm happy and I, I think that I hope, well, I don't think, I hope that this Christmas season brings lots of joy to the boys and girls in our community.
Anybody else? Counsel Mack?
Glad you read that, Minella, I wouldn't have been able to get through it. You know, this has been a question on the lips of children, not only in Cornell counties, but throughout the world. Anyway, the key thing here is Dr. Fauci, the real one, not the one on Saturday Night Live, is endorse this and I hope that Dr. Paul will give his blessings to it and remind all the kiddies and the parents that when they hear the noise on the roof, to get up, social distancing in place, just stay put and let Santa go on his way. I understand the White House, though, is not giving him any free airspace, so he won't be visiting the White House until.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, I want to thank the, the elf or angel who helped put this forward. I like the mention of Trinidad and Tobago, that is my father's homeland, and Santa's also big in the Caribbean as well. Seriously, though, this is a tough year and children are particularly affected in ways that are sometimes difficult for us as adults to understand. So this is important to talk about Santa and to be positive and to be hopeful. So thank you all for your comments and for your patience. Counsel Grant?
All in favor of this motion? Carried, Madam Clerk? Thank you. Carried.
Bylaws 2021, 50 to 163 inclusive, listed on the agenda, are being presented to counsel for adoption.
Moved by Counsel Grant, seconded by Counsel McDonald. Any discussion? All in favor?
In favor.
Carried.
Under reports from standing advisory special and adult committees, Madam Mayor, we have one report, cost analysis for Cornwall's greenhouse gas emissions. With the recommendation that counsel refer the request for a cost analysis associated with determining Cornwall's greenhouse gas emission to administration for a subsequent report.
Moved by Counsel Bergeron, seconded by Counsel Ebert. Discussion? Counselor Grant, McDonald and then Ebert?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just wondering, is there any costs associated with this request right here or is it just for a report?
Madam Clerk? No, turn to Madam CAO. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, it's just a report. So I believe the intent is to allow administration to come back with a report to hopefully be able to provide more insight on the cost.
Thank you.
Counsel McDonald?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was actually raising my hand to vote for it, so.
No questions then. Counsel Ebert and then Counsel Bergeron.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is just further proof of our great committee that we have formed, not quite a year yet. Receiving this cost analysis and potentially going through with, with this greenhouse gas emission inventory is really the first step in our work within our, our place in climate change. We can't necessarily get to developing targets or developing and implementing plans to combat climate change without having this inventory. And I know that the department already has inventory of some of our greenhouse gas emissions within the corporation, but not all of our city facilities are factored in there and nor is the community's greenhouse gas. So this request would be to cost out what that would look like as in cost for every city facility and our community as a whole. And we think that the scope of this project would be larger than what our administration can provide. This might be quite intensive. So this is why we're looking at a cost analysis, which we could then possibly refer to our next budget meeting to possibly include it in the 2021 budget so that we can have something ready by the end of the year and then we can start working towards this plan to, and a target to reduce our collective, community and corporate greenhouse gases. This is our first ask from the, the committee, other than reviewing the tree, the tree canopy bylaw or policy. So I think this is a really great start coming from our committee. I really hope that counsel supports this and then further supports the, the follow-up report when it does come back from administration.
Counsel Bergeron?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Ebert just mentioned some of the things I was going to point out, but I would like to read quickly an excerpt from the greenhouse gas protocols for cities. Responsible for more than 70% of global energy-related carbon dioxide emissions, cities represent the single greatest opportunity for tackling climate change. The first step for cities is to realize their potential, is to identify and measure where their emissions come from. You can't cut what you don't count. This is what this is today. It's really for us to get a baseline, not just of the corporation, but for the community. I think this is the beginning of a 30-year plan to get to net zero. That will be a conversation for the, for the future, but in order to really assess how we're doing, we're going to need to be tracking things properly. We cannot legislate for other municipalities, so we can only do what we can do here in Cornwall. And, and looking at it, I'm, I'm really proud to put my name on this. I worked on, on this with Jesse Good, who wrote the background, background on this, and it's, it's exactly the type of thing that falls within our environmental and sustainable leadership. This, this is what it looks like. This is step one.
Thank you. Madam CAO, do you have enough from an administration point of view, enough guidance here in terms of bringing back a report and what that might look like or what the timeline might look like?
Through you, Madam Mayor, yes, I think we can, we'll be working on it and we'll bring a report back.
Thank you to, oh, Counsel Mack?
Just a comment?
Yes?
I thought we missed a great opportunity to cut our greenhouse emissions when we voted to allow outdoor fires. I just thought that we missed an opportunity there and there's no, there's plenty of scientific evidence that if 4,000 people in this town started, started outdoor fires on a Saturday night, it would best definitely affect the, the quality of air. So we missed a great opportunity there. Maybe we'll revisit it. Maybe this report will come back and say, we, that's part of the inventory. Thank you.
I want to thank all of the committee members. Counsel Bergeron did mention Jesse Good, who took a lot of time with committee members to write quite an involved backgrounders. So I think that as the CAO indicated, they'll be able to use that to, to bring something to counsel. All in favor? Carried.
Favor.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor? Another standing committee?
Oh, sorry, we were at number one.
Reports from standing committees. I have a report.
Sure, go ahead. Sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. It's been a while since I've given anybody an update on the fundraising for the Arts Centre, and I am so happy to say that I came prepared here this morning to tell you we had passed the $800,000 mark by $2,000, but actually, I found out this afternoon, we're at $815,000. So I just want to say if somebody is waiting there to see if they're going to give this year or next year, this year would be really great because maybe we'd be there by December 31. We only have $184,328.11 more to go. We have raised $815,716. So this, I think it tells me so much about people's support for the arts in general because in a time like this, when we've been living under a kind of a shadow, people recognize the, the value that arts bring into our lives and it speaks so much to the generosity of the community who in spite of not being subjected to high-pressure sales pitches and public events because we can't hold them, people have been continuing to contribute and we are so absolutely grateful. We've got a couple of events coming up in the new year, stay tuned, but honestly, that little bit of room for donating is shrinking fast. So, thank you.
$184,000 to get to a million, right?
That's all we need, yes. And it's amazing, I didn't think we'd be at $1 million. Now, many people, they go by the, the property, they see nothing's happening, but I can tell you, if you were able to get in the doors, you would see a great deal happening. In fact, it's starting to look like a construction zone. So maybe Mr. Fotherup would tell us what's going on behind the locked door.
Mr. Fotherup?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, there is lots going on. Our design team is hard at work producing a preliminary design that will be available in the, early in the new year for, for the public to see, for some public engagement. As well as Counsel McDonald mentions, there is some construction activity happening inside. So we've got some extensive investigation work happening to try and determine the geotechnical conditions of the site. So some excavations in the basement to uncover existing footings of the neighboring buildings, just to ensure that we know as much information as possible during the design to try and eliminate as much as possible any surprises during construction.
Thank you for that update. Counsel McDonald?
Well, yes, and I just want to say if they find any mislaid bank deposits down there, they, they come into the fund, say?
Thank you, Counsel McDonald, for raising that. You know, we, it is important to talk about committees and the, the work that, you know, volunteers in our community put forward. We are progressive in, in large part because of all the folks that step up and want to see good things happen. The arts community is definitely present and we understand the importance of art. We also understand the economic development around that. You know, we saw the successful art walks that took place this summer and how much that revitalized the downtown on those Friday nights. So there's all kinds of good that can come from this. Thank you for raising that. Any other reports from standing committees? Okay. Madam Clerk?
We have no notices of motion, so moving on to the confirming bylaw, 164.
Moved by, oh, Counsel Grant?
Just, I'm wondering if you're going to talk about the year-end review notice that was put out?
Okay. Yes. Not sure if I see. I'll turn it over to the CAO and then we can talk about what's happening Thursday morning.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Counsel Grant. So Thursday morning at 9:00 AM, we are doing a year-end review virtually through Zoom. There is a link to register on the City of Cornwall's website, or sorry, on choosecornwall.ca's website. So we already have, I think, over 140 registrants speaking to Mr. Peters this evening. And, you know, over the past, per the release, over the past 23 years, we've talked about more than 300 businesses. So every year, the presentation seems to be very well-received. It has some great photos and updates with respect to businesses and developments within our community. So certainly hope that everyone will want to try and register and join in. The benefit with doing it virtually this year is people don't have to get up quite as early as we've had to do it in the past and drive down to the Galaxy Cinema. So I think that, I think that it will be good. ChooseCornwall.ca is the website where you can go on to register and it's this Thursday morning at 9:00 AM.
Thank you, Madam CAO. Thank you, Counselor Grant, for reminding us of that. 9:00 AM, Thursday morning. Counsel Mack?
Just wondering who did the baking?
So we have to thank Deputy Clerk Ms. Caskinett for decorating each of our spots with some Christmas items. Is that correct? Madam Clerk?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Caskinett.
Counsel Bergeron said I could take his home.
I didn't hear that. No, he's nodding. No? All right. Any other items on the agenda? So if not, I'm going to turn to Madam CAO to introduce someone to all of us and to the community. Madam CAO?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So a week ago, we have a new employee that joined us. I'm going to have everybody look over towards where Emma's sitting. We have Catherine Wells, and Catherine is waving to everyone. Catherine is our new strategic planning coordinator. Catherine joins us, most recently worked for the municipality of South Dundas in a communications role as well as working on special projects within the clerks area as well, and also I think has had some experience with some tourism items. So prior to her work at South Dundas, Katie worked for the Business Enterprise Centre here with the City of Cornwall at the Civic Complex within our Economic Development Department. So we are happy to have Katie join us. She's getting on board just in time before the holidays to get settled in so that in the new year, off we go and we can get started. So I'd like to welcome Katie to our team and we're looking forward to working with her in the months ahead.
Thank you for joining the team, Ms. Wells. You will remember, counsel, that in June of 2019, we set up a strategic plan with all of our priorities and we formalized that as we went into the fall of 2019. And those priorities are important. They're the vision that we have had as a counsel, that we have communicated to the public. Life has its own way of setting up roadblocks and barriers and pandemics, but we have to remember that we set a vision for this community based on priorities that we worked on together. And so the work of Ms. Wells is to focus on those priorities, those long-term priorities that will benefit this community. So you have a large task at hand, but a very critical one for the future of this community. And we appreciate you coming on board and getting to know us, and I'm very confident that we'll be able to do some really great work together. So, welcome. So before we adjourn, does anybody have any thoughts or comments? It's Christmas time. Counsel McDonald?
Well, I would like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Joyeux Noël et une bonne année.
Anyone else? Ditto? Thank you, everybody, for the work. Oh, Counsel Dupell, go ahead.
Very, Madam Mayor, I'd like to wish everyone a, I'd like to wish the residents of Cornwall a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Joyeux Noël et bonne année. And I hope that 2021 brings us a brighter year than 2020 did.
Yes. Thank you. Anyone else? I am very proud of this counsel and of our community for all of the work and patience and sacrifices that were made this year. We have stayed together and we are going to see it through the home stretch, but I just. just want people to know that we are continuing our work with administration to continue to move projects forward, to continue to maintain public safety, quality of life in our community, with a focus on working together to get through this difficult time. Alors, je remercie les résidents de Cornwall. Je suis fière de vous, de la patience et de la force que vous avez montrée pendant cette période difficile. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas. Joyeux Noël. We'll see you in 2021, and we'll be hopeful that things will be better. Merci.
Motion to adjourn. Counselor Bennett, Counselor McDonald, all in favor?
In favor.
Carried. Stay safe, stay, stay together, stay connected.